This January 27th meeting, 2022, meeting of the Tacoma School Board to order. Will everyone please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now I'll read the land acknowledgement. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their land. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and the socio-political realities. General Counsel Renee Trubuland, please read the roll call.
Good evening, President Von Bryr.
Here.
Vice President Keating.
Here.
Director Stroger.
Here.
Director McColbry.
Here.
We have a forum. I also want to call the roll for our student board representatives, Caitlin Yeoh and Shidra Blonica.
Okay, welcome this evening, ladies. All right, moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt.
Thank you, a second.
A second.
Thank you. All right, any questions or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have an agenda. All right, so moving on to item six, recognition of staff, students, and community. Six point one, recognition of the whole child site awards. Oh.
Think we're gonna have Ms. Laura Allen join us, and then we're gonna have the very wonderful Ms. Amanda Scott Thomas next.
Very enthusiastic, yes.
I'm no Oprah of Tacoma like Ms. Amanda Scott Thomas, but I'm excited to share with you the whole child month, um, whole child site awards for 2021, 22. And what I'm going to share is just a tiny little snippet from each school. Please know this is not the entirety of their greatness, but the tip of the iceberg. In alphabetical order, Bernie Elementary School.
Oh. There we go.
One of the biggest things about Bernie is how they welcome kids at every door. At every entry, there is a person there, a staff member, a teacher, greeting kids every single day, and relationships are built in the entryways every morning. Not only that, but in the cafeteria, Mr. Matt, the custodian, builds connections with students during lunch as well. Bernie also does All-Star connects each morning in circles, and the administrators send out a, um, to the entire school prompt so that they have common language and a theme throughout the day, throughout the school. One last thing I want to share about Burnley, Bernie, is that they host a grief and loss group for students impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Staff said it's been very eye-opening and has brought them together closer as a school community.
Before you move on, can I ask the tech team to help us out up here? The, we can't, there's no screen here for us to see the presentation, just so you know. Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Blix Elementary School. So in addition to morning meetings, Blix Elementary uses star awards based on classroom and school-wide expectations, and they also do social emotional learning lessons. But one really cool twick, uh, twist for Blix is that they feature the intersection of SEL, which is social emotional learning, and ELA, or reading, and they weave the two together by highlighting a character trait in their books each month. So for example, earlier this year, all grade levels focused on books that talked about gratitude. Crescent Heights Elementary. So again, each child is greeted by several adults as they enter, before they even enter the classroom each day. And this allows an adult or two to notice if a student is having an off day, and that way they can wrap around them and help that student to be successful. They teach social emotional lessons in a variety of ways, from the curriculum to circles, but they also use skits where they practice role-playing, social scenarios, and they write in their journals and do reflection. This allows students that may not typically feel heard or seen to be able to share their feelings and their ideas, and to feel connected, and to celebrate one another. Finally, I'd like to say, because I would have loved this as a kid, Crescent Heights works to provide fun and engaging opportunities for learning that are unique, such as outdoor lessons.
I certainly would have enjoyed that.
Fawcett Elementary School. Team Fawcett prioritizes relationships, not just with students, but with families and staff. This year, Fawcett has been resilient, moving to a temporary building, and has worked hard to create a common language to help students and staff and community members to feel at home on the McKinney campus while new Fawcett is being built. They use zones of regulation for emotion checks and bucket fillers, and our social emotional learning curriculum getting along together, and it's helped them to create a safe and warm and welcoming environment. I can't talk about Fawcett without sharing how incredible they are with data, and they have the data to track and know that their interventions are working for all students. Foss High School. As Washington State's oldest IB world school, Foss has a rigorous IB program courses, and this allows them in their block scheduling to offer what they call a seminar class. It's kind of like an advisory class, or back in my day, I would have called it homeroom, but I didn't do anything cool like they do. They use this time to support students academically, socially, and emotionally. They use culturally responsive community-building activities during their seminar classes. After a 15-minute check-in with their primary seminar teacher, students are able to make appointments to visit up to two other teachers, but not only that, they'll do small group counseling during that time, principal advisory committee, all kinds of check-ins, and team building activities. Gray Middle School. This year, Gray Advisory Leaders completed what we call a KWL chart for each student. Now, K stands for what do I know, the W is for what do I want to know, and the L is for what I have learned. And they did this as a deeper dive, to really get to know the whole child, each and every one, in their advisory classes. They started with five kids, and then they kept going and going until they really knew each and every one in depth. Further Gray has continued to deepen their practices in SEL and PBIS, and most recently have joined some restorative justice trainings to bring that into their school as well. Lister Elementary. When you walk onto Lister's campus, you feel the outcomes of their SEL work. Students have developed social and emotional learning skills to help them thrive and succeed. And what teachers shared with us is that they do emotion checks, and if a student is feeling dysregulated and is struggling, they have the opportunity to go to what's called a calm corner or peace center to take a moment to breathe and, and, and adjust. However, teachers shared that they don't need to use it very often because kids now have so many skills in their tool chest to be able to move through any conflict internally or with others. I also have to highlight with Lister that not only are they all in for social emotional learning, but also for racial equity and student and family voice. This is a huge theme at Lister, and they created a vibrant, welcoming community room for families to gather and to connect. Meeker Middle School. The Wolverines are being recognized for a commitment to PBIS. This is positive behavioral interventions and supports, and basically that just means that they are being proactive to build systems to make their culture and climate welcoming and warm and safe. Meeker has put in a reflective and challenging work to do what we call a TFI, or tiered fidelity inventory, and what that means is that they looked at all kinds of different, um, uh, components about their school and rated it and did really hard, deep reflective work on it to be able to choose next steps that were meaningful and based on data. They also have created an advanced tier team to help those kids that need just a little bit extra. Reed Elementary School. Reed is super proud of how social emotional learning has been come ingrained in everything they do. Because they're the jaguars, one thing they use is how to jag. These are lessons that are for social emotional learning, and, um, these lessons, their counselor, great counselor Lauren McDonald, recorded the lessons, videotaped them for teachers to use, and broadened student voice and leadership by letting students help lead those video lessons. This year, students have worked really hard to become better at resolving conflict. Staff and students use I-messages and empathetic listening to resolve conflicts with a win-win solution. The greatest outcome is that students know how to activate their own voice and speak up in a constructive way when they have noticed impact from others. This work has really changed the feeling of the building, and a new student to Reed this year said, "You really don't have bullies at this school." The Roosevelt Rams. Roosevelt Elementary School has focused on re-establishing of their positive behavior foundations to create a safe and positive climate. They are welcoming to all. They have used a tiered fidelity inventory also, and they focus strongly on relationship building that highlights positive feedback because Roosevelt believes on focusing on students' strengths. They have that feeling of belonging that they're cultivating, and that they consider the root of a behavior, not just what's happening. They take this relational approach to discipline. They want to also create this feeling of relationships and closeness in their staff and to make sure that there's a culture of positivity and fun. Sammy. Sammy uses mentor groups to promote the feelings of belonging. Their Samly model, it's a multi-age, so freshmen through seniors are in there, so older students are helping to mentor youngers, uh, along with the teacher. And in that mentor group, they do relationship-building circles. They also, uh, at Sammy, use student-led restorative circles. In fact, students help train staff on how to use restorative circles. They, uh, use youth voice and equity-focused. In fact, they asked students who said that they tolerated or hated school to tell their story so that Sammy could change policy and make that, their students' narrative part of the learning space. Whitman Elementary. Whitman Elementary uses school-wide cooperative challenges each week, and they work hard to create PALE Awards that they give out daily. Students are recognized each day over the intercom and at lunch as well, but they also support adult SEL by having staff give gratitude and appreciations to other staff in the announcements weekly as well. Students and staff use what they call the peace path, learned in the social emotional curriculum, to resolve conflict, so both staff and students use it, and they work diligently on cooperative challenges. And last, certainly not least, Willie Stewart Academy. Willie Stewart has grown so much along their SEL journey, and they want, they're using signature practices. One of those is emotion checks, but Willie Stewart has put their own twist on it, and they call them vibe checks. Additionally, Willie Stewart is working to prioritize student voices. One way they're doing this is by having students have regular lunches with the principal to be able to share about their experiences at school and give their insights on what would make Willie Stewart a better school. These are our 2021, uh, 22 whole child site award recipients, and I just feel really excited to be a part of this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. And I really want to congratulate all the schools and the staff and the students for all the hard work they've done to move, um, their schools and communities forward in, in social emotional learning and appreciate the, and I've been to many of those schools and have seen it firsthand, and it's very impressive work. So, um, does anyone else have something they want to say to the SEL?
I just would say I can't wait till like they, the staff, some of the staff can come and we can like be all in the same room together. Um, I know two years ago, we were able to do that, and it just like added so much to the celebration, so, um, eventually.
Yes.
The only thing I would add is I've been to a lot of those schools, and I've had a lot of students in those schools, and I can say, just as a community partner walking in, or just a parent or an aunt walking in, you feel so welcome in a lot of those schools that were listed. So I'm really excited that we continue to do that amazing work.
Thank you. Anything? Okay, cool. Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations to all of the schools, the students, the staff, and the communities that support them. Six point two, approval of the recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to the Tacoma Fire Department Local 31.
All right.
Oh, here she is.
Yes. Good evening, uh, directors and superintendents and our public. My name is Amanda Scott Thomas. I'm the director of the Community Partnership Office, and I'm super excited after the whole child awesomeness to talk about some community awesomeness. As you know, each month, we recognize a community partner. We do a pause in November and December, so tonight, we're going to be doing two. We're going to be recognizing our November and December, uh, Community Partner Awards, and then when I come back next month, we'll be doing January and February, and we'll be all caught up. Okay, so tonight, um, first up, I think I'm switching the order a bit, but first up for November, we have, um, Mello Hogan and Windermere. So as you all know, the Tacoma Public School defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student and academic success and success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that schools cannot do it alone, and in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what is best for kids. So first up, we have Mello Hogan. She is a real estate broker with Windermere, and each year, she organizes holiday meals for TPS families experiencing homelessness or unstable housing situations. She has organized this event for three years. Last year, they boxed meals for 75 families. This year, they were able to double that and serve meals for, um, provide these meals for 150 families. The boxes are all decorated, and they come with a roasting pan, sides, a turkey, and a Costco pumpkin pie. Windermere staff and volunteers, along with McKinney Vento staff, deliver the boxes to the school sites, and the schools, um, get those meals out to the families in need. The McKinney Vento staff say they are so grateful to be partnering with Windermere to provide for our families that are food and, uh, housing insecure. Windermere organizes a collection from our generous Tacoma community every year to make the event possible. So tonight, we have with us Mello Hogan. Can we invite her up and give her an applause?
This is your award.
You can have a few words right here.
Let's talk. Thank you so much for this honor. My family and I have, um, been, you know, um, we love our community, and I'm so honored to be with a brokerage who also amplifies all the efforts that, um, um, we bring up to them, so thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hogan. We, we really appreciate your work, and, and, um, please pass on our gratitude to your family and the rest of the Windermere community.
All right. Up next, we have for our December recognition, Tacoma Fire Department Local 31. So imagine this, Santa and his masked helpers showing up to your house in a red fire truck loaded with holiday cheer. That's exactly what happens for over 100 TPS families in December. For 33 years, the Tacoma Fighter Fighters Local 31 have participated in an annual Christmas project that provides food, clothes, and gifts to children in need leading up to Christmas. Each year, families are selected with the help of Tacoma Public Schools' family and community liaisons, our counselors, and our social workers, and the project is, is funded solely on donations from the member, members of the Tacoma Fire Department as a way to give back to their community. The project continues to be a success, and it brings joy straight to the front doors of TPS students each holiday season. So with that, I want to invite representatives of the Tacoma Fire Department. We have Danine Stack and Christina Grossochuk.
Those are not easy names to pronounce.
Definitely an honor to be part of something so great. Both Danine and I were privileged to be on that fire, that fire engine, delivering those presents, and the joy and the excitement that we were able to experience from not only the children, but the parents, and how grateful they were, um, and we are just so honored to be part of something so great that brought such, such goodness to, uh, the community of Tacoma. It's amazing.
Another thing I'd like to add is not only do we have our current members that contributed to this year and every year, but there's a great deal of people that are retired that still contribute. So thank you again.
Thank you.
And please pass along our gratitude to, to your, um, folks at, at the, both retired and still active and contributing. We really appreciate it. I can only imagine the excitement on those kids' faces and their families, and it, it does take a village, so thank you so much for, for helping us help the families. All right. Item number seven, superintendent's report. Seven point one, whole educator recognition. Forrest.
Yep.
Or, okay. Forrest.
Director Forrest Greek is coming up, and then, um, just as a caveat to, as he takes the mic, um, so many good things that are happening in schools, even in the month of January, as we've started back, it seems like we've been back for a while. I want to take a moment to thank our staff, um, all of our staff. As our world, country, county, and community continue to still battle the challenges of COVID and the stress that that brings, our staff continues to step up and step in whenever needed, and it's not lost on me what that means. So whether we have our volunteers pushing into our schools, and it, and one of our staff members saying, "Hey, do you need any help?" Welcome. Or one of our students that gives you a smile. We are working together, and it's making a difference. In the month of January, it is whole child month, and I'm here to tell you that Tacoma Public Schools and the community of Tacoma, as you well know, is full of Tacoma whole child champions. We heard some already. Our hallways are packed full of them by wonderful men and women dedicated, and I just want to take a moment as we leave January 2022 to say that we all greatly appreciate you. And so in that spirit, Dr. Greek is going to introduce you, or reintroduce you to a very valuable members of our team, our principals.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garcia, and members of the board. Here to honor for our whole educator, uh, folks, uh, for the month of January, our principals. So, um, as you can imagine, our principals are amazing leaders, and they've been instrumental in the success of TPS. They're a central person in each of the schools that create a culture, support staff and students, and partners with our families and our community members. During this unprecedented time, they have been the key leaders to ensure learning is not lost, and the health and well-being of students and staff are at the forefront of the work we do in schools every day. Principals have had to shift and adjust schedules and priorities on a daily basis for the last two years in response to COVID. They have done this with grace, they've done this with compassion, and of course grit to ensure that schools are safe and healthy each day. I just want to thank you on behalf of Tacoma Public Schools for our principals and all their hard work and leadership. We are lucky to have, uh, each of you to serve with us at TPS. The first slide you'll see is Bernadette Ray of Silas, principal there. This is Pat Irwin, a graduation of Lincoln High School principal. Don Kreider of Stewart. And you'll notice, uh, the stick is a spirit stick that was actually introduced this year, and it's passed on from school to school. And you just can imagine, principals, speaking of one, um, formerly, we get really competitive. And so the spirit stick, you'll notice in a couple of our pictures as well, it's passed on to the next group to kind of get them pumped up for the school year. And then our two principals here, and they're passing one from, the spirit stick from one school to the next school. That's Heather Johnson on your left, and then Christie King on your right. Heather Johnson's principal at Blix, Christie King is a principal at Lister. And last but not least, from Hilltop Heritage, Michael Knuckles, who's on your far-left principal there. So thank you so much for our principals, and I have Donna Basil here, who is a principal, and she is here representing, uh, as a group. There's many others that can join us today, but I'm sure they're online watching. Do you have anything to say, Donna? All right. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here, uh, school board and superintendent. My name is Donna Basil. I'm the principal at Wainwright Intermediate School, the proud principal of Wainwright Intermediate School, and I just want to recognize my colleagues, my principal colleagues, who have worked so hard. They do this every single day, uh, during this time of change, challenge, uncertainty, and transition. The school landscape has transformed dramatically over the last two years for several reasons, but the pandemic, as we know, has been the biggest catalyst over the time. Learning took on a variety of personalities. We learned new vocabulary like synchronous and asynchronous. Learning was online, remote, hybrid, and in-person. There have been staff and substitute shortages, and our colleagues have been able to manage that with, with grace and finesse. There have been, we noticed that there have been increased, uh, social emotional needs for staff members, students, and their families. My colleagues have kept our students safe by upholding guidance from our school district and the health authorities around safety mandates, contact tracing, social distancing, but most importantly, they continue to keep our students safe emotionally and build strong relationships with their students. I want to end on, um, recognizing my colleagues for maintaining high levels of engagement for staff and students as we mastered a, a different type of teaching and learning over the, uh, last couple of years. They continue to differentiate to meet the different needs of our circumstances that change, uh, from day to day. As you know, Tacoma Public Schools created an online school within months, and, um, that helped our students who are unable to access learning in different ways, uh, to help them learn during the difficult times. So to end, I just want to say that I appreciate the flexibility and want to recognize the adaptability of my colleagues, uh, who lead fearlessly in a time of an ever-evolving world. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much, Donna, and one last round of applause for our principals for all educators.
Yep, thank you Forrest and Donna, especially for coming tonight and sharing for your, on behalf of your colleagues, and please, um, you know, I'm publicly now and, and always so grateful for the work that all of our staff do, and especially our principals, who are really just working at both ends of the day, uh, to make this happen for kids, so appreciate everything you guys do. All right, moving on to item eight, staff report to the board. Eight point one, strategic benchmark monitoring report, academic excellence graduation.
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to have a We're going to have a couple of our Assistant Superintendents, Ms. Toni Pace and Mr. Zeke Edman, take us through our annual report. Just to remind the public and the Board of Directors. So, we have our five goal areas, and then within each of those goal areas, we have priority benchmarks that you have adopted when you adopted the strategic plan. Graduation is one of those priority benchmarks, and so this is our annual report on graduation data.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. I'm here with my colleague. Where'd you go?
You're all by yourself.
Assistant Superintendent Zeke Edman. Happy to do this presentation with him. We've basically broken down the presentation into three parts. The first part is to take a real close look at some data and see what the data is showing us, and then to also look at some key findings from that data and identify our next step. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Zeke Edman to take us a walk through the data together.
So, this is, falls under our first goal under Academic Excellence. Our graduation goal being at 85%. What you'll see here is, and it's always kind of awkward because we're in 2022. We're talking about a year ago, the graduating cohort of 2021. You'll see there's about a point and a half percent drop from the 2020 cohort, but still well above our 85% goal. It's kind of a longer-term look at it, going back to 2013. Kind of a reminder of where we started in this journey, and it has definitely been a journey. Kind of in that recognition with principals, a lot of legwork to get our seniors across that finish line with all of the things that kind of took place during COVID. You'll see a little later, keep in mind, these kids did two different school years. They spent first semester in remote world and second semester in hybrid world. And so keeping tallies of credits and right-on-course and grades, things like that, was quite a workout. Comparing that, how we did in Tacoma with the state, what you'll see here is our cohort of 2021 at 88.4% and the state at 82.5. So we continue to outpace the state. That has been the case now for several years. Hopefully will continue as we go forward. But you do see in the state, a small drop, about a half percent drop from 82.9, 82.5. Again, for us, about a point and a half percent, and part of that's just kind of size and numbers themselves. Bringing it down a little further, looking at our student populations by federal race code, you will see that our Black, Hispanic, two or more race, and our Native American students did drop. Some of those had a pretty good spike the year before, the 2020 cohort. However, our Asian students, Pacific Islanders, and white students did see a small uptick. So we still have some work to do there in balancing out that opportunity. And then looking at it by males, went up a small tick. Our female population down. Our gender X is a subgroup of smaller than 20 students. So usually in a group that small, we don't always show the data, just to kind of protect identity. Free and reduced lunch group was a small dip. But really, we saw in our ELL students kind of having the largest impact. But happy to report special ed did maintain with the prior year, although overall is down a couple percent from the years prior. So just kind of an overview of those findings. Again, our goal being 85%, so we are above that and have continued to maintain above that through all of this. In those student race groups, with the exception of Hispanic and Native American students, we continue to exceed the graduation benchmark goal. Our free and reduced lunch and ELL students probably saw the biggest impact. And just for some kind of context, a percent and a half, when you look at our actual cohort, is probably 25-ish kids, maybe inching towards 28. So although a small number, these are still critical kids we've got to capture. TPS ensured all seniors had laptops. So if we go back to that kind of beginning of remote for that group, they were one of the first groups who wanted to make sure had device in hand before the year started. And then is, again, just kind of that craziness they got to experience of doing two completely different types of school between first semester and second semester. I'm going to turn it back over to Toni Pace.
So for next steps, we are going to continue to work on our CAP plans, which I think we're going to have a study session coming up pretty quick. Go more in-depth than that, but basically, continue to expand our processes around that to include academic goals that go beyond math and ELA, that support struggling students. We might see courses like science, social studies, even maybe PE with, you know, some action steps and goals around those areas. Currently, we're implementing the CECL CAP goals and CECL curriculum for secondary students. We saw some examples of that earlier this evening. Usually they're seen in advisory classes or throughout academic courses or homerooms. Also continue offering students access to credit recapture opportunities through summer school and extended learning opportunities. And our TOL, Tacoma Online, continues to build supports for online, on-time graduation with tutoring opportunities and counseling and various other methods to attract students and to help them support their work. Also tighter alignment of the student reports around graduation requirements and continuing to build on Schoology, gradebook consistency, and communication for students and families so they can monitor their academic progress. That's the wrong way. So, we are now open for questions.
Other questions?
I have a question, and I don't know that there's really an answer to it, but I'm thinking about, and I appreciate Zeke, the reminder of how much the school year changed, last year particularly.
Right.
Because it's a lot to track. And I'm wondering if there, if it's being monitored or I'm curious about how much connectivity was a factor in some of this, in the drop in graduation rates. And I'm very curious to see what happens this year in comparison to last year, just how students succeed. But I'm just curious if connectivity was a factor or if there's any way that we know.
The short answer was there is no way to systemically measure the connectivity of students when they were in that hybrid place. We did a number of innovative and creative options on having online options, hubs, community hubs, working with Metro Parks, several other things to try to limit that impact. Specifically, especially working with our McKinney-Vento students. But there wasn't a systematic way to measure connectivity. And then, you know, there's the connectivity that you have, and then we all know the frustration of when the internet goes down. And so there were a lot of barriers that our kids face. Also remind all of us that our kids face really rigorous standards. 24 credits and 24 opportunities. There's not a lot of wiggle room for our kid to have to face unique challenges. And so connectivity definitely had impacts. Instability of housing, instability of family lives, so many different factors and challenges that our kids overcame. And with the support of their families and obviously community partners and the staff all around, they faced huge challenges. So I don't have a straight answer of what percentage would have been direct connections to that connectivity.
Sure, thank you.
So what do we do in the event a student does drop out? Like, what does that look like for that student, for their family? How are we reaching back to that family or that student? I know they're 18. So how are we connecting with that particular member, former member of the Tacoma body? And just providing resources or anything like that? What do we do for our dropouts?
Yes, that's a great question. So first, when we look at a four-year graduation, then the state determines the terminology on time. So we all recognize that different kids learn at different rates and different time periods. So, TPS, we also look at our students with a five-year, six-year, and seven-year graduation rate. And some of that's in your appendix, and it's also available online. And so although our on-time graduation, and I'll use that term because it's a state, I believe that you graduate on time when you graduate, the numbers actually go up. And so it's not as significant. And then we have different programs, and one of them is the Willie Stewart Academy. And so the Willie Stewart Academy has a system where they, is specifically designed to reengage students. We also work with, in the past, we've worked with different companies that have reengagement services. And so think of it this way, the comprehensive school or the four-year school may have not worked. Some kids come back for a fifth year. Some kids even come back for a sixth year or a five-and-a-half years. If that model doesn't work, some of them may be re-engaged through the Willie Stewart Academy. And that's much more, it's called an open-doors program, and so they can graduate anytime during that time. And then sometimes, like I said, we've worked with different companies, that extra step to come in and try to re-engage them if the Willie Stewart program didn't work. Some of our higher ed partners in the past, like TCC, have also had programs where we tried to connect them with them as well. So it's really a case management and trying to meet that individual student where they are.
Thank you. Did you have anything you want to ask? Okay. Sure, okay. Toni, would you mind going back a slide?
Next step slide?
Yeah. So, could you clarify for me what the second-to-last bullet is? Tighter alignment of student reports around graduation requirements.
I will, I'll start with that, and then I'll ask Zeke to fill in the blanks that I missed. That, what that is talking about is having reports that are specifically tied to graduation requirements that would show us a student's missing a social studies credit or a specific area that a student needs to work on in order to graduate. Am I close, Mr. Edman?
So, so these-
Want to add anything?
Yeah. I think part of that too is the granular level that we provide that for all the folks that have wrapped their hands around supporting the student, right? So originally, we kind of had some admin reports. Now it's counselors, how do we get teachers in there? So the folks that are seeing the kids on a regular. And then part of our shift is getting some of that data now into kids' hands, to families' hands. So they're part of the conversation. But Toni's right, credits are a huge one. Assessments, there are certain assessments a student has to pass along the way. So as we look at the different graduation pathways, which pathway fits which student? And how do we make sure they've met those metrics?
Great, that's so much clearer. And I think, so basically, we're better tracking a student's progress towards graduation and finding those sort of pivotal and key points where they might be. I know we have some policies around grades lower, going below, C, C-, that they automatically notify the student, the parents, if the student's under 18. To make sure that they're aware that that's happening. So, so this is a process by which we're just making sure the alignment is better and we're leveraging the multiple eyes on the same problem so that children and students can get access to help. Is that-
Right.
I would just add that, you know, later on the docket tonight, you have the opportunity to adopt a revised credit attainment policy. And when you go through that, you can see there are several different options. And that's what makes it really hard to build a single report because there is a decision that could be made that says, is this an elective or a cross-credited core class? And so we have to figure out ways to code those electronically. We have ways to code it on paper and pencil, put it in the Q file and things. But as we build systems, it's very complex. And so we're constantly working. I'd give a big shout out to our data apps and development team and the DART team. They are unsung heroes. It is not a very popular job sometimes when folks are saying, "I need this, 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 and this." And that's a, you know, it's not as simple as just a, well, let me code that in there. So they're doing a bang-up job.
So, other question on that, and speaking of apps. Is this part of the Compass app that the students have access to where they are in, you know, where their homework, what they haven't turned in? Is all that part of what you're talking about?
Right, so that's the build-out. So not only their journey, but you know, attendance impacts that. We know these other things that lead to that. The grad requirement piece is a part of Compass will fold in in the fall, so that's not in there now. But checking their grades, checking their assignments, things like that they can do.
I'm always excited to hear new things are happening in Compass because I know that the students' engagement in their own learning and the responsibility that they have to take to get over that line is critical. So, I'm so impressed by what you guys have developed, and it's brilliant, so thank you.
And if you're a staff member out there, you may look at Basecamp and see there's all kinds of new reports this week. And so big shout out to Jeff Ball and his team for helping us get those in there too. It's an ongoing journey.
Clap for them, yay!
Real quick, I do got something.
Okay.
I just thought about it.
Okay, Director Stroger.
Schoology, I know when we first rolled it out, there were some issues with the ease of use and/or it being up to date. Are there, do you have any sense of if that program itself has gotten better or is more up to date and things are easier to use for families right now in comparison to when we first rolled it out?
There's kind of two pieces, right? The, it was our only vehicle for a while, and now we're back face-to-face. But we definitely see it at secondary, more and more elementaries are starting to use it. When we think about our kids that are isolated or in quarantine, they're able to access their work, still submit assignments, do grade checks. Probably the bigger hurdle still remains getting that parent, that access code to get in. So there's, it's kind of a two-step dance. It'd be great if they could just log in and say, "Look, that's my kid," and go. But, so connecting schools with that data, so we just send another batch out to schools so that if parents call, they can quickly give them that code and get them in. And then we've tried to set up tutorials and quick videos and one page, anything to kind of help that learning curve, right?
Yeah, okay, cool. Yeah, the access code was the reason why I asked, so I'm glad you said that, thank you.
Okay, well, I really appreciate the work. This is, and as we mentioned earlier, I think Toni Pace mentioned it, that we're going to be having a study session coming up on the CAP plans because, you know, we're sort of going through each of our strategic plan initiatives and academic excellence is, unfortunately, even though we continue to roll on it every day because that's what we do, it hasn't had as much attention because of COVID with all the other components, the health and the public, and the mental health. And so I just, it's nice to see that you guys have been going full bore, as always, on the academic excellence and can't wait to have a study session and learn more about what each school is doing. So thank you, Zeke, for that, and thank you, team. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to number, item number nine, Members of the Public Wishing to Address the Board. We have two protocols. School board members encourage public participation. Your civic input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. However, the superintendent or designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at the meeting, you may also send an email to the board Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability or COVID accommodations. So option one is the in-person, option open meeting. And general counsel will call your name when it's your turn to address the board. Please speak into the microphone, leave your mask on while speaking, and you may have up to three minutes to share your comments. Or if there's a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. So, general counsel, do we have folks?
We have four speakers tonight. The first one is Margaret, no last name was given, regarding cost-benefit analysis of school-based masking.
Okay.
Is Margaret here? And I had checked earlier, and it didn't sound like Margaret had checked in at the front door. So we'll go to our second speaker, who is Guy Dodge regarding business opportunity for minority-owned businesses.
Great, come on up to the microphone, please.
Hi, everyone. So I have a French accent, so my English is tough, yeah. So my question was like, I have a business and I have innovation business and a new product. And we develop new product, and I'm an inventor, so we have a company. And we have a product for disabled kids that can draw attention to them when the floor is wet. And I've been approaching a couple, for a couple weeks, the school's district operation and the director and the supervisor, and I've been calling them and sending email, the demo of my product and the video, and no one has responded to my email. Even phone call, nothing. I went to, I met a couple of principals. They love the product, but they have to redirect me to the operation department of school district. And since then, I never heard from anybody, nothing. But the principal loved it because it's good for disabled kids or blind, blind people and all these things. So, uh, that was my, my concern I came for. I won't know exactly how things work. How come you call people and you send an email and everything and no one has been able to respond to your email or nothing? Everybody just kept, I know that we had a COVID situation. But at least you have to be respectful to people to respond back to the, to the emails or phone calls. Or maybe, uh, I don't look like. Because when I call, I leave a message and I'm like, oh, that's an accent or maybe something. Maybe I'm, you know, I'm just questioning myself. I say, okay, let me be here and, uh, address this. And I wish somebody can see this device and, uh, see exactly how good it is for disabled kids or even regular people too. So we try to reduce the number of sleeping halls in America. We have over two million sleeping halls every, each year and, uh, ten billion in compensation. So everyone carry liability insurance. So how come we can reduce our amount to, from ten billion to five billion or maybe to, maybe one billion a year? So we've been working on that for five years and finally we got a product. That's what I came for.
Thank you very much. And, uh, superintendent, maybe you can have somebody connect and, okay. Uh, thank you, uh, Superintendent, um, Santoro. All right.
Okay. Our next speaker is Sharon Gooden regarding business opportunity for minorities and women with the school.
I just came here with my partner, so, uh, I'm with him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Karen Bridger Brown regarding accessibility.
Hi. Um, I am a mom of ten children in Tacoma. My oldest son graduated in two thousand thirteen from SODA. And my youngest twins will be graduating in two thousand thirty-seven. I am also a precinct committee officer and I'm addressing a concern of members in the twenty-seventh legislative district. We come together tonight to collaborate on what's working, and it's fun to see everything that's going well, what's not working, what services are needed, and what the priorities are for the children of Tacoma. We have experienced an unprecedented challenge with COVID and divisive politics tearing our community and children apart. Policies have been implemented without full understanding or regard for the detrimental impacts on our children, teachers, and families of students. The unions and politicians have linked arms, spearheading these policies one after another, while the voice and partnership with the community has been pushed further and further out of the process. The Open Public Meetings Act is supposed to guarantee the public an opportunity to observe and be part of these school board meetings. In my desire to address many concerns of what I see happening in our schools, this is my first meeting. I have found Google searches, clicking on links, Zoom meetings, emails, no responses, more Google searches, more links, and finally, the reservation of the elusive limited ticket to attend this meeting. This is complicated and time-consuming. Many will choose to disengage, some have disenrolled homeschooling or sending their children to private school. Attendance to an open public school board business meeting should not be a complicated process, especially for those of various computer skills and access. I am fully aware of many elderly responsible for the education of their grandchildren. They deserve to have a voice and opportunity to be here too. I'm asking that you effectively and quickly help bring back in and include all the voices and participation of caregivers, students, and citizens of our community, clearly providing direct links to our school board meetings with invitations and access to attendance on communication found online and in the Tacoma Public School phone calls and the email communications. Thank you for your attention to the resolve of this challenge. Your service and time is appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Bridger Brown, appreciate it.
And option two is to provide written comments, and we have had no members of the public submit written comment. That closes our comment for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Drewbrow. All right, moving on to item number ten, the consent agenda. Have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any, uh, comments on the consent agenda or, um, any thing, anyone wants to mention or pull? Okay. Having heard no dissent, we will move forward with the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. All right, going on to item number eleven, policy matters. The, um, eleven point one is the second reading of Revised Policy Two Thousand Credit Attainment.
The district's general counsel recommends that the board adopt the proposed Revised Policy Two Thousand.
All right. Do we have a motion for, um, item eleven point one?
I move to adopt.
Okay, great, have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, um, now we'll have a little bit of discussion on this, on this policy. This, this policy is on credit attainment and, um, general counsel, would you mind telling us a little bit more about this and the process it's gone through?
Yes, thank you. It is timely that we're addressing this policy tonight in light of our graduation, um, uh, report. I also want to remind everyone that, uh, in addition to the feedback that we are taking on every policy from the Equity Policy Review Team, which is members of our community, but there's also a link on the board's webpage, which we post every policy that is under review. And we can have, members of the public are welcome to submit any feedback, uh, using that link. They can always just, uh, email me if they want to provide, uh, feedback on a policy. This policy, uh, I have to give credit to Doug Hostetter. He's our secondary, uh, director of schools. He worked to bring this policy into compliance with changes in the law. Um, but we also, um, uh, sent the policy out to some, uh, high school counselors as well to get some additional feedback and, uh, wanted to make sure that this policy reflected the board's intention to recognize that principals, counselors, teachers, staff members work closely with our students to try to find all kinds of alternative ways to attain credit, not just the traditional sit in the classroom. And so that's what I think is great about this policy, is it does provide, uh, additional methods as allowed under the law and by O S P I to give our students more options. So, we've had robust reviews, some great revisions, and I recommend that you adopt this.
And, and as you mentioned, but I want to expound upon the fact that one of the reasons we were reviewing this in, to, in, to begin with, is there have been some changes in the laws. Um, and some names, some certain tests that were required for graduation are no longer, um, and some different reasons. So this was to actually bring it in compliance with the law. And as we've now done, is our new policy, is to put a purpose, a statement at the beginning of all of our policies to, to make it so the general public can understand what this, what this policy means. Um, and I have to say, this one, I, I find exceptionally good because it really captures the, um, discussion that was had, um, at the Equity Policy Review and what some of the comments that principals and others that are in the system doing the work, um, were saying. And so I'm, I'm pretty excited because I think, I think it really does, um, explain what we're trying to do in this policy. So, thanks to the team, um, all the way down, superintendent and, uh, your team for having this, worked this one out. This is critically important for students to get credit for their apprenticeship programs or their work outside of school or other ways where they can, can, uh, work to get some credit, um, to move toward that graduation. Um, arts, this, all those things. So, anyone have any comments or other than that?
I also appreciated the name changes, um, because sometimes it's the language that holds certain communities back from participating in retesting or reapplying and doing things like that. So calling it like the credit recapture instead of back on track. Because then it's kind of, back on track kind of feels like an accusation. So I really appreciated the name changes, um, when I was reading about this policy change.
Thank you. All right, with no further comment, I will call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. All right. Um, the next item, item twelve is financial report. The district's next quarterly financial report is planned for February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Monthly financial statements can always be found on the district's website, H T T P S, um, colon backslash backslash W W W dot tacomaschools dot org backslash department backslash business and finance. Okay. Um, next is item thirteen, curriculum and instruction. Starting with thirteen point one, the approval of acceptance of special education A R P I D E A Part B grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The superintendent, on behalf of the executive director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the acceptance of the special education A R P I D E A Part B grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction in the amount of one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand and forty-seven dollars for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-one through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and the expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item thirteen point one.
Aye.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any, uh, discussion or have any questions on this item? Seeing none, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four, four point, four to nothing. Um, moving on to thirteen point two, approval of acceptance of the special education I D E A Part B safety net grants from the Office, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The superintendent, on behalf of the executive director of Student Services, recommends the Board of Directors approve the acceptance of the special education I D E A Part B safety net grants from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars for the fiscal year two thousand twenty through twenty-one and the expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Thank you, superintendent, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anyone have any questions, um, for the superintendent on this item? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? All right, item passes four to zero. Item thirteen point three, approval of the acceptance of dual-language program grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The superintendent, on special assignment, recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the dual-language grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for period nine-three-twenty-one through six-thirty-two thousand twenty-three and expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Thank you, uh, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item thirteen point three.
Thank you, a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Moving on to item fourteen, business matters. Fourteen point one, the approval of acceptance of Learn to Return Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the Learn to Return Grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of six hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars for period one-one-two thousand twenty-two through seven-thirty-one-two thousand twenty-two and expenditure of funds according to accepted guidelines. Funding source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Thank you, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point one.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Anyone have any questions or opposed? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Item fourteen point two, approval of the acceptance of Meals for Kids two-point-oh grant from the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the acceptance of the Meals for Kids two-point-oh grant for the office, for the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars for the period of seven-one-two thousand twenty through nine-three-two thousand twenty-two and expenditures of funds according to accepted, accepted guidelines. Source, Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Thank you, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point two.
Have a second?
A second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Moving on to fourteen point three, approval of the guaranteed, guaranteed maximum price amendment number two to contract number T S D dash two-one dash one-four-six between Tacoma Public School District number ten and Abshire Construction for the Safety and Security Upgrades Bundle Project.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve G M P Amendment Two, which states that the guaranteed maximum price for the purchase and installation of additional hundred and seventy-three CCTV cameras at the following T P S sites, I D E A High School, Lincoln High School, Foss High School, Stadium High School, Silas High School, Mounttaoma High School, First Creek Middle School, and authorize the superintendent or designee to sign said G M P Amendment Two in the amount of two million, seven hundred and one, four hundred and seventy-six dollars, excluding sales tax.
Thank you, Morris, do we have, um, a motion?
I move to adopt.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have a comment. Um, when it was brought to the board, the last time, I made a statement about First Creek Middle School being lumped in with all the high schools. And after that meeting, I found out that the other middle schools already have CCTV. So I just wanted to say that publicly, that a lot of our middle schools already have CCTV and now First Creek is going to be upgraded and getting their own CCTV.
Thank you. Um, is there anything, any clarification around that, or is that?
Uh, they were missed on the list. Because one of the things that our, our Safety and Security Department did was go through as they were reviewing those cameras, depending on what their age was and the, the areas of incident, uh, there were some changes that were made because of that.
Okay, and thank you, um, Madam Director, oh, go ahead.
I just want to add that this is not a comprehensive list. There'll be more work as we move forward in the future, and so we're chunking that, so.
Right.
And other schools are going, yeah, but we need upgrades too, is, is, yes. And so we're oftentimes in, just staggering that. So, um, it will, there'll be more work in this area coming as well.
So we'll see this item back again, another amendment later.
Yes, you'll see it several times.
Okay, great, well, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, we've commented on it. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Uh, moving on to fourteen point four, approval of the guaranteed maximum price amendment number one to contract T S D dash twenty-one dash oh-seven-five between Tacoma Public School District number ten and Hansel Phil Phelps Construction Company for Fawcett Elementary School.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve G M P Amendment One, which states that the guaranteed maximum price, G M P, to date on Fawcett Elementary School project and authorize the superintendent or designee to sign said G M P Amendment One in the amount of nineteen million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars, excluding sales tax.
Thank you, Morris, and do we have a motion?
I move to adopt fourteen point four.
Do we have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Um, item number fourteen point five, approval to award Hellis Construction for the purchase of synthetic fields and tract materials.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent and or designee award to Hellis Construction the purchase of synthetic field and tract materials. Funding source, uh, twenty-two capital bond.
Okay, we have a motion?
Move to adopt item fourteen point five.
Thank you.
A second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or concerns?
Um, I was just wondering if, um, just for the public, if you could just give a little bit of background on this?
On this particular one, what we're trying to do right now is really get, get ahead of our supply chain issues. Uh, currently, we're looking at anywhere from a six to eight month backlog when we, when we look at ordering these materials because of- when we look at ordering these materials because of polymers and things. A lot of it going back to the freeze that occurred in Texas. So what we've done is that we've got the preliminary designs done, but we were actually pulling this out of the contract with Coors Mill Construction so that we can order that material now. It's not that they're going to deliver it immediately to us, but it puts us in line so that when we're ready to do the GMP for the construction of those fields, we hopefully, keeping our fingers crossed, will have that material on site to be able to get it installed.
Good planning, as always, Morris. Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? And there you have it, four to zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 15, other business. There is none this evening. So we are at the fun part of the board meeting where everyone gets to talk about what they've been doing out in community if they've had an opportunity to do that. So item number 16, board comments and reports. Who wants to go first tonight?
Can we start with our student reps?
Sure.
If they want?
Of course we can. Our student reps would like to, go ahead. Caitlin?
So yeah, it was great to hear earlier.
You want to reintroduce yourself just for the public.
Yeah, my name is Caitlin Yeh, and I'm a senior at Stadium High School and a student rep to the board. It was really great earlier to hear about like all the work that has been gone into like social emotional learning and making sure like students feel included and welcomed because it has been a little frustrating due to COVID. Like, we plan events or fundraisers, and then they have to be modified, and then like eventually canceled. But it's comforting to hear that work is still being done, and it's like the mental health of students is still being prioritized. And then secondly, we had our first all-city senate meeting this morning, and it was a little disengaged just because it's our first, and it was online. But it was really great to hear what all the schools are doing despite COVID and how they've managed to put on events and fundraisers and dances. And my friends who are representing Stadium are really excited about the next one. And I think overall, hopefully, the next one is more engaged, and we can be in person soon.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
Caitlin, could you talk a little bit more about the event? I'm unfamiliar with the event that you referred to this morning. Can you just talk a little bit more about what that is?
Yeah, so all-city senate is like a once-a-month meeting of three representatives from each Tacoma Public Schools high schools, ASB. So there's a bunch of different grades, and like all the schools are represented. And we, today, we met through teams, and I heard usually they like meet in person during like fourth period about once a month.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to say anything? Come on up and reintroduce yourself to the public.
Hi, I'm Shida, junior Sammy. And I just wanted to appreciate the staff at Mary Lion Elementary School because we've been there for, we're about to finish our month there, working alongside them. And I just want to appreciate the teachers because it's been really hard. And I can like first see from their perspective about teaching and all that, especially since there's been a lot of absent students and having to like catch up when they come to school. And I think they've been doing great jobs. I just wanted to shout out and appreciate Mary Lion. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And before we let you go on that, I have a question. So just for clarification for the general public who might not know, so you're at Sammy, which is a high school. And you're, you said you're working alongside them at Mary Lions. Tell us a little bit about what you do.
So it's mini-term, and me alongside my other classmates, we chose as our mini-term. And we just pick different grade levels. So we have an AM and a PM class, and I just chose second grade. And we just help the teachers. We have some people help at lunch and create like relationships between students and help teachers, you know, something like that.
Great, well, thank you so much for doing that. It's really exciting. I love J-term. But anyway, I really want to appreciate your work, and now we can all clap.
And if you want to become an educator, we would probably be happy to help you down that road.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, a lot of my peers actually find out they want to be educators from now.
Wow.
We've been having a lot of fun with that. Thank you.
Awesome. So great, well, yay, good for you guys.
Don't forget to apply for one of those coaching jobs, or Mr. Admins has some tutoring opportunities. Mr. Admins.
We're going to keep you in line to get to where you want to be.
Thank you, Shida.
Thank you, Shida, so much. Okay, so who wants to go first tonight?
I'll go first because it's very short. Okay, in the community, I want to give a shout out to the staff at the PDC, specifically the Tacoma Online staff. If you guys don't know, the PDC is the, how do you say it? Professional Development Center. I've been there many times for training, but I've been having a lot of technical issues because I'm brand new. And typically, you have to go to Tacoma site. And I grew up, I went to Skyline Elementary School, so I feel very comfortable on that campus. I went straight to the PDC, and the Tacoma Online staff, who are like doing their jobs, were still kind of helping me get acclimated to my job. So in the community, I want to give a special shout out to all the staff at the PDC and the Tacoma Online staff who are housed there. That's it.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Anybody, who wants to go next?
Oh, I'm long-winded.
Yeah, go on.
Well, since.
You are doing it.
Since everybody's been excited to hear my report about J-MAC, I actually paid attention in the meeting, and I took notes so that I could share out with.
I'm so proud of you.
No, I always pay attention. So we had two new members join us. Was it last week or the week before? I'm J-MAC council member, Kiara Daniels joined us. Parks Commissioner Rosie Ayala joined us. So that was exciting to be able to welcome them on. We continue to focus in on our themes, Jedi, public health and safety, and community wealth building. Jedi being justice, what is it?
Equity.
Equity, diversity, and inclusion. God, I didn't want to mess it up because you were sitting right here. Also, what happened, President Bonbright was elected by the members of J-MAC to continue on as chair for another year. Normally, that rotates every year, so she gets to stick around. They like the work that she's doing there. I agree. But we're really starting to lock in on some tangible steps and action steps moving forward as municipalities, and to see how each J-MAC organization can lock in. We also had two presentations. We had, what was his name, Bakoda Warren. He came in and presented a high-level overview of the Tacoma Equity Index, which is a geographical tool that highlights areas of higher and lower opportunity and guides equitable service delivery. And then we also had Renee Meshe from Tacoma Pierce County Health Department come in, and she talked about the Equity Action Collaborative, which is an effort to align policies, practices, and engagement to put the community at the center. So, you know, a lot of the time that we spent on J-MAC was planning and working with rainforest strategies, but now we're getting to the fun stuff, which is action steps to move our communities forward. So that's my report. I don't got no sports talk or anything like that. Just J-MAC, just for you.
And you win sports, though? Mounttaoma won, and that was really exciting. Sorry.
So Mounttaoma won the boys' all-city and Pierce County League championship for the first time in a long time.
Woo-hoo, come out, tea.
I don't know anything about sports, but the cheerleaders are really excited, so I knew that.
This is fantastic team. So, well, thank you, Director Stroger. And I will say, your contributions at the meeting were also very appreciated. So it was a pretty exciting meeting, and the presentations were stimulating. And you could just see the, this is the aid agencies, public agencies, the elected officials were all just chatting up on how we could start doing more work collectively. So this is where we're putting action back in the joint action committee. Sorry. All right. Director Keating, Vice President Keating.
All right, y'all better buckle up. I've been busy.
Buckle up.
So I've been doing a lot of the January with legislative session, and there's been a lot of work with WASDA. So most of this is all going to relate to WASDA. So this, this week, the Federal Relations Network, which I'm a part of for WASDA, we met. We had advocacy on the Hill, and so we had some school directors in DC, and then some of us here remotely or across the state. And so we participated in meetings with Senator Cantwell's staff, Congresswoman Strickland and her staff, and Congressman Kilmer, his staff, and Senator Patty Murray and her staff. And there are additional follow-up debriefs in between meetings and plannings. And so the way that WASDA, the Federal Relation or FRN network, or FRN works is it's really a shared process of what are the priorities of Washington State School Board Association and advocacy around all students in Washington State. And so it's this very collaborative effort in a similar way with J-MAC, where you're working with other people or other elected officials on behalf of the similar goals and missions. And so there were, this year, and this is my second ti, my second year of, no, my, yeah, my second year, I don't even know. So this year, it was far more consolidated in terms of the asks and the advocacy. So one of the, there are four priorities I'm going to share. So McKinney-Bento increase in funding and universal free meals. IDEA part B funding, which was on our agenda tonight. And let's see. So part of, every time I've been with other board directors who have advocated for IDEA, I learned something new every time. So they were highlighting the commitment that the federal government made. So initially, 40 years ago, or more than 40 years ago, IDEA was passed, and the federal government made a promise or a commitment, I should say, to fully fund it. And that the highest level that has ever been funded is at 15%. And so one of the school board directors, Sandy Hayes from North Shore, she shared that their district, 19% of all of their levy funding goes to special education services. And so this is sort of, there were lots of examples of how levy funding is used to cover parts of general and basic education that that's not what it's designed for. And then the other thing that was really powerful, so connectivity and broadband equity. There were student reps from Chimmicum, Southwoodby, Kennewick, Federal Way, and Shoreline School Districts. And the students, as always, are very powerful in their, just what their experiences are and shared one of this morning with our meeting with Senator Murray. One of the student reps from Kennewick was actually in his school, which is a brand-new building. And there was no, there's such poor internet access that he was having to use a hotspot on his cellphone to participate in our meeting. And so that was just, I think, a really good example. There's so many examples of connectivity issues that, just from around the state, whether it's rural, urban, or it's not like it just, whether you're on the east side of the mountains, there's just a lot of variables to it. So it was really encouraging. Senator Murray is very much a proponent of, of kind of, like, we are beyond a point where internet access and connectivity, it's a utility. It's not a privilege. I mean, it is a privilege if you get high-speed internet, but there's a very distinct understanding from our federal legislator or representatives and senators. And then the other thing, which I continue to learn more about, is advocacy on Impact Aid. And so the ask is around the Department of Education, the Impact Aid Program. And so Impact Aid actually, so, and please, anyone sitting in that front row, correct me and help me if I say any of this incorrectly. But the way I understand it, Impact Aid, like if you're a family with, if you're a district with military families, you don't get to collect the same tax funding. Is that correct? Am I close enough? Okay. So because of JBLM, so it's our school, some of our school districts that have a higher percentage of military families, they don't get the same level of funding. And Impact Aid is not funded in a way that makes up for those deficits. And so Central Valley in Spokane is also another area that, and also it includes our tribe, our tribal neighbors as well. So I always learn more about that. And for the Federal Relations Network, I was asked by the Chair of FRN, Drayton Jackson, who is a school director in South Kids App, to be, each, each federal district has two coordinators for FRN, and I was asked to be one of two coordinators. So I get to join that group of people. So I'll represent our district and board and District Number Six. And as Congressman Kilmer said, it's the best district in the state. He's biased. And then, so I'll start that role in February. And I know I'm going, I got a couple a little more. So then also, we've been doing, I know President Bonbright and I have been supporting legislation in the House and Senate and the State Lodge. And then I'm doing the WASDA conference on Sunday. And then we follow with state meetings with, we have meetings with our legislators from the 27th, 28th, and 29th districts, starting Monday. Hold on, did you have a question?
No, I wanted to make a point of clarification because you threw out a lot of numbers. I just want to say about the new role that you're doing. It's District Six, which is the congressional District Six, which you didn't, yeah. So just to make sure it's not a school district or whatever. It's actually all the school districts in District Six, which is Congressman Kilmer's district, which is quite a long, extensive, broad, rural, suburban, urban. And so Lisa will be one of two representing.
Thank you for that. Thank you for adding that. I feel like, what else did I do? And then, what else? Oh, so during our network call on WASDA today, there was information, the Washington Board of Health is, they're starting a process of getting community feedback on vaccine requirements. And they're the body that, because of RCW, which I'm going to ask General Counsel to clarify or add context to it, but they're the body that can authorize Mandy or vaccine requirements. Can you give a little context for that?
Yes, certainly. So school boards are authorized under Washington law to do some things, and there's other things that school boards and school districts cannot do. And one of the things that school districts cannot do is make vaccine decisions. And there is an RCW. It is 28A, 210, 140, and it provides authority to the Department of Health to make a decision about whether students should be vaccinated or required. So if anyone has concerns or wants to get engaged in the process, they should reach out to the Department of Health to give them feedback about whether or not they think that COVID vaccine should be required for public school students.
And I will also add that there is a formal process, and that process has not begun. And so, but there, and I, it feels like they're building towards that process, but it will, there will be an opportunity for public comment and participation with the Board of Health once, once that happens. But that's not anticipated to happen in this school year, based on the information we were given today. And then, so two other quick things. So Monday, thanks to Director Stroger, who passed the baton to me. I went, I got to spend some time at Mounttaoma. They have an LGBTQIA committee that had students and staff, and so they were talking about ways that they can improve their culture and climate on inclusivity. And so it was really, it was really, I was really inspired with the way that the staff engage with students on a topic that is, can be challenging for some folks to talk about. And the staff were really just very, I don't know, I was really moved by them. And the students, of course, were very engaged and insightful in their feedback. And my last message is actually for those of you up here with me this morning. Senator Murray, the times that I have met her and been in conversation with her, she almost always can make me cry. And today, she did not disappoint. And she just wanted us to convey to all of our, she wanted to thank each, this is, I'm quoting her now, "Thank each one of you for being a school board member. As a former school board member, I always say this is one of the hardest jobs. There has never been a harder time to be a board director. Know that I'm working as hard as I can for all of you."
Thank you.
And I'll tell you, if Senator Murray looks at you and says that, even if it's through like a little like Hollywood square man, I don't, I just cry every time.
She's pretty amazing.
And I realize that was a lot, so if anybody has any questions. So if anybody has any questions. Perfect.
Do you have any questions for Lisa? All right. Well, that was quite the handful, but appreciated. And it was, I think, I think if folks have, if it's that you're digesting it and you're not quite sure what, you know, what about it, you know, it's, it's changing, ever-changing. What Vice President Keating shared today will be different by the end of the week because legislative process is now going to start moving really quickly because we're almost, we're half, almost halfway through.
Not start moving quickly. It started quickly.
Yeah, but it's going to really pick up. So things will change daily. So I'll just be quick. Thank you for doing such a great job on the J Mac report. I can just move right on. So I was, since the last board meeting, I've been, had the honor of serving now on the Foundation for Tacoma Students Board. I'm sorry. Yeah, Tacoma Students Board, which in my role as President of this board, I would, I sit on that board. So that was really awesome to get to know other folks on the board and to participate in a board meeting. And then had, after that, actually, a kind of a onboarding three-hour session to learn more about what the foundation does and how our role can, and how we interact. So that was very informative. The other thing I did just this week also was the Bamford Foundation and Foundation for Tacoma Students coordinated a convening with Angela Jones, who's the new Director of the Washington State Initiative at the Gates Foundation. And that used to be, you know, Pacific Northwest Giving, which no longer exists. They kind of created a couple of new entities. And one piece of that is this new thing called Washington State Initiative, which is laser-focused on education. And so both early childhood, K twelve, and you know, the post-secondary linkage with, with college and apprenticeships and kind of next, next steps. So that was really fantastic with a lot of community partners